...for Monday, May the 21st, 2013. Deputy Speaker Kirk, call the office.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Lamb?
Here I am.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Seymour?
Here.
Mr. Seigler is excused. Mr. Fratelli?
Here.
Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Thank you. Let's all stand in for the President.
The President, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyway, after everyone's been in the dance floor, ladies and gentlemen, so we can have a comment on the House of Representatives. There's no hesitation to be, and so we're going to move forward to the appointment, and the first appointment there along through the economic development corporation.
Good evening. Counsel, I'm bringing before you a real Southfield grown and one of our own, I'm bringing before you a recommendation for appointment to the Economic Development Corporation of Monique Holiday Betty. She is a graduate of Southfield Lake, a graduate of master's degree from Lawrence Tech. She works for the city. She has strong economic development experience with DTE. You have in your package an outline of her bio, and I'm asking for approval to that corporation.
Counsel, can I get a motion?
So move, support?
Yeah, motion by Councilman Fraser, supported by Councilman Moss to approve the appointment to Monique Betty to the Economic Development Corporation. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. So we have heard, wait, and we'll have them still at the same time. Next, we have Council, the fourth and commission committee met, and we're filling the, the prior term of Mr. Richard Keir, and to that term, we're giving a recommendation to the Police and Fire Retirement Board of Mr. Duane Garth.
Madam President.
And Mr. Garth, you can wait until after we have a full motion for approval. Thank you. And we also have the reappointment of the Council Building Authority to Mr. Van Gaten. Does that have a motion?
Yeah, Madam President, I move for the appointment to the Fire and Police Retirement System Board of Duane Garth.
We have a motion by Councilman Moss, supported by Councilman Fraser. The other chair, Councilman?
Madam Chair, I'd like to table this item. Mr. Garth is here, and I hate to do this, but we had one applicant for that position, and I've sat in on this board, and they have not really stood that well. And as you know, they're off over $12 million, and we have taxpayers at the 6 percent, because that's their only pension system, which if it's short, it's hurting everybody against the city, and the residents' businesses have to pay. And so I would like to set another meeting, based by the system board, just see how it is, we haven't looked at it in a long time, and how it generates its checks and balances, and where's the pattern, and what it serves is, and the city does, and the good and bad where we have somebody that looks at their, where did they put the money, and then somebody checks on the regular basis, and see what percentage capital they make, so that we don't fall into the same predicament, and I call it a serious one, where residents and businesses in the city have 6 percent in tax bill because of the deficiency in the pension fund. And I feel, so this is not in opposition to this gentleman, it's not for Mr. Keir, I know, appears either way, but I'm concerned about how that goes functioning. We have two appointments to that, and I am certainly not, you know, I'm not even familiar with what our other appointment does involve.
Counselwoman.
Counselwoman, Madam President, because I, this $12 million that was lost, has been lost over a period of time, and we have to remember that we are in a recession that has affected many, many, and that's, so this isn't something that has really hurt us, it might sound bad, but it's been over a period of time. I would just like to say that I've done a little research on our pension board, and our pension organization, and we are ranked in the top 25 percent in the entire U.S. United States, one of the most financially healthy and best run plans in the state, and in the top 25 percent in the United States. So to say that we're in trouble is just not factual. I would like to have a thorough discussion to see where we are, I think that's certainly due, because obviously, we're not all on the same page about the health of this organization. There's no retire, we have a pension board, I really would like a delay, I think, and I will speak on behalf of Mr. Keir, he is highly regarded in the entire United States in his peer group, highly ranked and highly regarded, so I'm concerned that we're being kind of pushing the corner, saying that our performance is bad when in fact, we are in the top 25 percent in the entire country, and I think that deserves your opinion. Thank you.
You have, Councilwoman, say.
Well, I, I heard something that I concur with, so I look along with what they both say, but for different reasons, to have a talk.
Counselwoman, more?
Yeah, you know, as the court is here, like that, I'm in committee meeting with Councilman Jordan, and I don't disagree with what Councilman Fracassi said, but, you know, having interviewed the applicant, and very comfortable with his background, to be added to the board, you know, I'm okay with kind of a council audit of the functions of all the boards and commissions that appointments we make, but I don't know that we could reach the same conclusion that this is the right person that we should make, we should appoint. You know, I think we can go forward with both, you know, we still have another council appointment that's coming up on this board, and so I'm at a point, having that on those interviews, and doing, you know, my own research as we, as we got these applicants, that I would go forward with the motion, and still do what Councilman Fracassi said, maybe a council audit or a council overview of some of the, some of the appointments we do make, and a progress report on the board.
Madam Chair, the other one?
I'm a little confused. I don't disagree that there were some problems in the past, but I don't, I don't understand why not appointing the applicant would make a difference of whether we're having, we do a review of how the organization functions. And in addition, our treasurer sits on the same, the same board, so if there are any red flags that should go up about how it functions currently, I would, I would hope that our treasurer is paying attention to him, set up any red flag. He can't do anything about what happened when we became our treasurer, but for now, I just don't see the wisdom of not appointing a person that has credentials that this applicant has, and still do the review.
Right. Yes, I guess one of the things that bothers me is, the board won't have to train this person, he has a lot of credentials, but the board will have to train him in dealing with the pension board. And I don't understand how this is going to benefit the work of the pension board, who has taken a person who's got a national reputation, who's done, I mean, all this story about how badly it's done, we've done enormously well, we are, this firm is doing great, and it's documented, so this, to me, just is, nothing against the applicant, I'm sure he's a fine person, has great credentials, but I think we're just going in the wrong direction.
The other chair?
I, I just want to look around, to the board, I have to train this individual, they don't have to train anyone who is fit on that board, how are we going to be able to get individuals trained, that remain looking at his qualifications, he has experienced in working in this very mineral sort of field, so I just strongly agree with you to move forward, and do not be any advantage in waiting, because we will have to appoint.
But my point is, but if I mean, if I mean, my point is that we have, I mean, this young person that has credentials should be allowed to continue because of his expertise and his national reputation and the great performance he's done, and we're just saying goodbye, and we'll start over with somebody new, we're not in trouble, and that concerns me that we're taking this action.
But the fact that we are in trouble when we have entries in the village. The other point is, sitting on the penny board in the city of Southfield is actually a privilege and a luxury, and it's not a right, which is why we have the term "fire", so because you're appointing to a board, it doesn't mean that it's a lifetime.
I agree with you, I understand.
So what I'm just not trying to make it clear.
My concern is the benefit to us, my concern, Madam Chair, is the benefit to us. I'm not concerned that this individual has a lifelong question, the benefit to us is to retain the expertise that we have, and we're in great shape, because they know it's just something that we can't control, I mean, to say that this isn't, we're in bad shape, the whole economy has gone down, you know, we paid a price for that, but talk to the experts in the field, and we are in great shape, we are one of the most respected groups in the country, in the top 25 percent, that tells you something, which didn't happen by any city, by accident. Anyway, that's mine. I will not, I will not be supportive of this stuff.
So, this board, how do we sort of address that?
We have a motion.
We have a motion. And let me say this, this is what, what difference does it make by appointing one person to this board, because it doesn't make a difference. Every appointment to this board is important, because, because this board is the only one where we have it lost, the residents pick up the tab, and we don't have full say of that board, we only have two appointments to that board, and, and so it's very important that those two individuals, I mean, be reserved for carrying the oats of the remaining group, and, and that, and I just think that, you know, when they say the top 25, I'm sure the top 25 lost $12 million, so the 6, 6 percent that everybody paid out of the taxes, that wasn't given back, that was gone. We paid it, and it's lost, they took it out of the pocketbook, hereby go with it, for anything else, they lost 6 percent on the tax bill. So, yes, investments are that way, you get ups and downs, ups and downs, but back there, you have one holding company that, uh, six million dollar mortgage, $200, last payment, $40,000 dollar reduced payment on 10/2011, no further payments were forthcoming from November 2011 to September 12, as a result of pending loan renewal and repayment negotiations. The board approved it right now, $2.5 million. So, I mean, it's still happening, whether you talk about whether we're creating a plan, you recruit it, you know, this is crap, this is, this is 2009 through 2012, this is 13, it's what five months is from supply. So, I, I, it is not, like you said, this is becoming, you know, it's a concern of mine, it is not who is appointed, it is that this board has to be looked at, we have two votes on that board, they have to be strong votes, and I just don't think that we have to have them power there to carry the weight, or, or change the system, so that we have checks and balances, that we have insurers, and when we have on our own investments, so that we can have somebody that checks, and see whether the percentage is, is the average, top 25, over 25, whatever, to protect the, the city, and that's all I'm trying to say. I just, unless, voting against it, I want to table it and discuss it, tell them how this is viewed tonight. This is the first time I've seen this application in the name of tonight, all right, because I should say Friday when I got my word. And so, you know, it's not like we sat down and discussed this amongst each other before the appointment.
I have to clarify, that's not the process. The process is we go to the board and commission committee of this council, and we interview the individuals that we want to support.
It is a special kind of.
And this lost our people money, absolutely, and this individual is highly qualified to do that. Counselman, uh, Fratelli.
Yeah, the, you know, I'm still sort of confused, and it seems to me that Ms. Seymour has her own argument, and argument is, to get this world expert on a committee, he was on a committee once in a while, $12 million lost. So, and I just think that this candidate has the qualifications, and whether or not a person has to learn, everybody has to learn when they get on something new, but with his, with his background, he'll be a pretty quick study, and it's not like you're bringing someone in that doesn't understand anything, and they have to go to the basic training, and I don't disagree with what Mr. Fracassi is saying, because I think this board does have implications that if they don't do it right, it costs everybody money, and I think we do need to review it, but I don't understand why we can't review it with a new mix, just as well as we could with another, and I don't know what delaying it is going to buy us other than, we're not, we're not, we're not reviewing the individuals, we're reviewing the process, and it doesn't seem to me that it makes any difference who the individuals are, if we're reviewing the process.
Madam Chair? Um, I want to talk about this investment that everybody's talking about, this was a real estate investment, and it did at some point lose money, but in the beginning, in the beginning, it was a very good investment, the people were invested, Detroit invested, Conneycast invested, Southfield invested, others did, money was made, people made great profits, over a period of time, lost money, but all real estate lost money. You can just look at this because this real estate, they just, this is a bad investment. This was a good investment, people made money out of it, and that's documented, and one takes the time, and that's still, you know, used to some of the, the system happening, but don't, when you have lost on this individual, the real estate market has been terrible during this economic recession. Originally, it was a good investment, even though there was some concern about how it came about, it was a healthy investment, it raised money, and that's documented.
All right, we currently have a motion on the floor.
The other chair, I would just say, I just want to put a lot of, just one thing here and other, this was issued February 14th of 2013. Put it to the chair, back to you, just so that everybody knows that this is current information.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Moss, supported by Councilman Fraser to approve the appointment of Duane Garth to the Police and Fire Retirement Board, and that's the church, we do a vote. Yes. Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Seymour?
No.
As mentioned, it's under the committee, now I know the gentleman's qualifications here they are substantial, but I definitely was going across this council, that, that this board is a board that we have to look at, and I hope that this gentleman dies of trouble, yes, and, and make sure that next time, if another person comes up with no reflection, if we find out, if it's entirely, if it's a limited state here, if we have a cash register, if it's in the, and they all will pay. I agree.
So, you have a note?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
You have four votes in the board.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So I don't need any comments, I don't need any comments from the audience.
That's exactly what I was going to say, this is our regular meeting of the social council, we do not want any applause or any, any noise from conduct.
Madam Chair?
Uh, Councilman.
I think we should take Mr. Fracassi's words to heart, and set up an opportunity to review the folks in this committee, too, and maybe the finance committee, take a look at it, to see how this board operates, to see if there are any more checks and balances that need to be applied to this board in order to protect the finances of our community.
Thank you. This is actually, this is actually another thing this board has to be filled within the next few months, I totally agree.
Madam President, I'm going to review, this is Mr. Fracassi, he has, he was like himself. You've done a speech, people have been, and a lot of people should pay attention.
Uh, Councilman, may I continue to ask you again, also, like you said, if you could, close to the top.
Hey, Mr. Lamb, we have an opportunity to speak to you. We had a discussion perhaps this evening about leading board, and the reflection that was that, that this thing needed to have councils to be the tension, you did not discuss with the board or against this applicant, but basically the whole conversation of importance of this board, and the loss that occurred, and that it allegedly had been 50 percent, and that is my eye of.
We heard all that, but, but, what we're going to say is what happened another time, another time, another time, on that board, which hurts.
If you're talking about it, we really, we really, we really.
Now, now, I'm a sick mind, and everybody has to understand that this is not the only issue that's a lot of time, but the other time, all the others have not been talked about, and I'm a little bit disappointed, I want the truth to know, my truth is not to know. Now, I want everybody to understand what I, what I know, is, is a board company, it's a mess.
I want to make it clear that with the point of the City of Police and Fire and Time, this is a board, we're not looking, we're moving forward, they were lost in the past, or they've got one individual on the board, and we're looking to move forward, and not have these more increases hopefully in our name, and we're starting from around zero today, so we're not looking to be happy, happy, but what can we do as a city council to make this board more secure and efficient?
What is wrong today, what is wrong one ago, what is wrong in the middle, is still valid, there were things wrong, you can't erase wrong, you can't erase denso, that's what we're telling, the taxes, those are prices, we start, we have trouble here, and you will all go, okay, just one rule, go ahead.
Madam Chair?
I just want to say for the record that I 100% support those views of a fire and police investment, and I know that the civil service, the retirement plan, it's a problem that, than the fire and police plan, and so that this is, regardless of the ratings, for us, to keep our taxes competitive with other communities, it is essential, that the council, we, and we do the investments, we do as you have tonight, the people who get on that board, and we need an update, we get updates from the public service, we have a mission, force, and taxes that we have at the same time, because every year five, we increase the taxes to our tax base because of the performance of us, and we love the insurance, I think it's essential that you establish a routine method to keep you updated, so that the tax, the last 25 years, or it's not, um, six, six months ago, how can the council, in your role of parliament, really stay on top of us, and communicate the time, because our country, when we, when we look at our tax for the city of Southfield, that is a major contributor to the, and we, we tax every other area, and it's essential for this body to be just informed and just involved, and let that condition know that we're able to get a go on society, and they have a role, and we have a role, and we need to connect the dots.
Counselwoman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things I want to say, first of all, my, my, my friend, I didn't make that connection, that six higher, Ricky higher, we have done with $12 million for, for five years, and that is, uh, all of them, wanted to stay on for another term, Ricky finished, the same for another term, and we're higher, and I support really is for him, because he's done that job, it's not against his individual, but if I had to make a choice, our long experience and, and the knowledge that we have, if it's taken, kept us on this step, I don't think everyone in the council or all of our other officials are really agreeing to what's going on. Police and Fire Pension Board is 82 percent funded, our third board is 68 percent funded, so the first, Police and Fire is doing better, and that's the thing with that.
All right, thank you. So next to, we have a, not yet.
We have one more point, first, and then, Madam President, I think that, well, for the reappointment to the Southfield Building Authority, Daniel Kaden, Stuart?
Yeah, a motion by Councilman Moss, supported by Councilman Fraser to approve, and to Van Gaten to the office, duly insured and commissioned. I'm going to ask all the individuals in Congress at this time, and Mr. Garth, I guess you've heard a lot of the discussion, and so you've heard what the consensus of the council is, and I know you need to go on to the other side.
To you.
Oh, I'm sorry, and we have a board on you to debate.
Aye.
Aye. And your vote, what you give. Now, we have to debate. Fratelli, right in. You swear or affirm to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State, and the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duty to the board of which you are being appointed, and for the state of Southfield, come your best of your ability. Good morning. Oh, thank you. Don't tell me to say that, you know. Good job. 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 Yes, we're not continuing without meeting, and I'm going to ask our state representative, Rudy House, he has some installation he wants to share with me, Bobby and House.
Just to you also, Senator, I want to thank you and Lawrence, Senator, and Kirk.
One second. We do have the city council meeting continuing, and so we do have one to spare. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to come and give an update, you know, to know that we're on to our budget process in Lansing. So this week is going to be a week where we're going to be spending some time in the conference committee, of course, with the government put out this proposal, where the budget should be, and the House Republicans get that, their ideas, and the Senate Republicans get that, their ideas, and of course, the Democrats get our ideas, and none match. So it's going to be in conference committee this week. We expect that the smaller budgets like Ag, DNR, will be done around the end of the week. For some of the larger budgets, community health, and also corrections, we're probably going to take it next week. So we're probably going to be holding on these bills next week. As relates to city revenue, local municipalities, I think there's a pledge to keep everything even, there wouldn't be a significant increase, and the government would not be a decrease. So everything is going to be even for constitutional, revenue sharing, and also either. So the values have to be respected, so even revenue is a possibility, and I wish it to be more, but the House Democrats had a quarter million dollars to the revenue sharing process, of course, Republicans took it out. So there's quite a big difference there. As relates to any other issues that are going on in Lansing, as a specific race of Southfield, I've had some conversations with M.D.I. about the possibility of M.D.I. having some shared or total control over Southfield Road. So we have started that conversation in Lansing, and I understand this in other communities. And so it's not out of the realm of possibility that they happen here in Southfield. So we're going to continue those, and we'll pull in the necessary folks from Southfield to kind of enter those conversations once we get to that point. Of course, all of no fossil remains a huge issue in Lansing. Medicaid expansion is probably one of the largest issues that are going on in Lansing right now. We, the federal government has offered to expand healthcare to over four hundred and seventy thousand individuals here in Michigan. Republican House has rejected that proposal and has come back with a new proposal in terms of Medicaid expansion. It should work, but to bring their Medicaid expansion work is that they want to put a cap on how long people can actually use Medicaid, which is four years currently, and there is no cap. And this will create a number of changes at the federal level, which they must approve at the federal level, and I don't think they will. The other piece that kind of rubs a lot of Democrats the wrong way is the five percent mandatory kicking in from every family. So if you make fifteen thousand dollars, they're going to ask you to pay five percent of your income as a co-pay, which is almost a third of what you make. And so with that being said, you know, we have been actively opposed to this bill, and Republicans are going to start moving through the committee process this week. So that's kind of what my report is. From Lansing, if there's any questions, I would love to take a few.
We'll open it up to the council inside. I know it was a compliment, Scott.
Really, there's some extra money, I understand, up in state for local roads? Is that a possibility of getting any of that?
Uh, there was a discussion on that. Yeah, so the road, there's a four hundred and eighty-three million dollars that we have in extra revenue that the governor is going to have to figure out how do we spend, the legislature to figure out how do we spend. I know some folks would like to see that, those dollars for roads. However, I think that there's, I think the governor wants to do a total fix in terms of how we go on funding roads versus peacefully taking, you know, the four hundred and eighty-three million to cover. I think what the, I think what the appetite at Lansing is to come up with a fix. That would be a last resort if they take the four hundred and eighty-three. I think that would just go to show that there is no fix. Right now, the governor has dropped his proposal for what road transportation funding should look like, and of course, the city has, I think between those two proposals, they have five votes. So there's a long way to go on road transportation.
Have there been any discussions on bringing toll roads to the city? Or, I mean, of course, you want to look.
There has been some discussion about toll roads. However, we will have to change, we're going to get a waiver from the federal government to actually have toll roads here in Michigan. And I, there's a chance that we could get a waiver, but I understand that it's not likely. Because of the way that we have decided to accept dollars in transportation, we have been excluded from toll roads, and there just has to be a waiver to actually bring toll roads here. And the upfront cost of actually building the toll roads has also been an obstacle and a barrier.
A compliment, sir.
Yes, seems like we can't get off the road issue, but one of, one of the things that, yeah, one of the things that we really need to get serious about is how we fund our roads. And I know the Act Fifty-One money comes from the petroleum industry, the tax on, on fuel. But as the campaign standards go up and electric cars may get more popular, people won't be going to the gas station, they won't be filling up, or using it once fuel. So we have to find a different way to them. And I know it has been talked about, but has anybody gotten serious about finding a different way of funding the roads by some other method?
Well, I think that's where, you know, a couple of proposals come in, where the governor has put his proposal, you know, we all talked about moving the sales tax off of gasoline, right? Moving to wholesale level. We've all talked about that, you know, the replacement, the governor also includes a registration fee. So that, you know, they understand the obstacles as we, you know, require automakers to build cars and go longer and have more miles per gallon. We understand the predicament it puts us in based on our formula. And so as we put out these proposals, they are taking that into account and very seriously taking that into account about how we fairly put a user tax, user fee on how to fund roads. So that has been at forefront of every conversation.
Yeah, one of the things that has to be taken into consideration is because this is such a tourist state, that the folks that come from out of state, even though they aren't going to use as much fuel as they have in the past, they, they need to share in the cost of, of people who are roads. So, thank you.
How's it going?
Yes, just short. Do we, do the people ever win anything?
Do people ever win anything? I would say yes. I do think that people win in the legislative process. Have we, have we won over the last three years? I would say no.
Well, I haven't won either. I usually get back six hundred dollars from the state, and they took four hundred dollars from me, I got only two hundred. Why? And I'm not going to win.
No, I understand, but my office is in the flood of calls from individuals who are seeing a decrease, especially after this tax season. You know, our governor and the Republican, our control house and both the Senate have decided that the best way for us to jumpstart our economy is to tax our savings. And now, those are not Democrats talking about, this is actually the truth. We have seen an increase over just the last two years here in Michigan, where there's been a half a billion dollar shift that from corporations to the working at a half a billion dollars more in taxes than mediated under the previous administration. And I understand that number after this tax season will bump up to one point four billion dollars that residents pay more under this government than mediated the previous administration. So, but your experience is what many others experience, and you're very consistent with what I hear in office.
So what's going to be done? Nothing? What's going to be done?
I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to remain very bipartisan here. Because I'm trying to get a look at everybody's society, but the very short of it is that there has to be a shift, a shift in control in the House, that for us to be able to stop this, for us to be able to reverse this trend, for us to turn this around, there has to be a shift in the House of Representatives at the state level. And we must have Democrats be elected, and we must have a Democrat be elected to be able to stop it, to be very lucky. To answer your very short question, we need Democrats in Lansing. A to.
Yeah, we're about to go into our budgeting session. I think June thirty is when we're going to finalize everything, and I never understood why the state has a different figure of your start than the city does. My question for you is, because we're about to go into a June thirty session, is there anticipation that things are going to be finalized in Lansing by this, that we can all be dealing with? Okay, good.
Yes, I think we are expecting to round up about it next week. I think we're at a, I think, and many expectations kind of exist on its own out there for time being.
All right, I'm sure the constant communication about any lasting changes that might affect the work that we're doing here.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rudy, if I may, call you Rudy.
My pleasure.
I'd like to thank you for representing the city of Southfield. I know every time I call you that you're very responsive to us, and I'm sure a lot of us up here feel the same way, so thank you very much.
No, my pleasure.
Time to speak for me, too.
I didn't want to continue the approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair.
Compliment to the state.
I move that we approve the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting, April first, two thousand thirteen, the committee of the whole meeting, April eighth, two thousand thirteen, the special meeting of April the twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, and the committee of the whole meeting of April twenty-second, two thousand thirteen. Report.
We have a motion by Councilman Gracious, supported by Councilman Ma, to approve the city council minutes and meetings. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you in favor? Okay. Let's move to our agenda. We have a short agenda, two items tonight, which will be filed by a re-discussion on the special use request. The first item is an obligation for the city to participate in open accounting, wealth, balance, keto control program in the next year, the building of highness, with keto porn, violence, sex, and car rental, range of licenses, from the model two to the serious life-threatening issues. The city's calls for this program are reinforced by open accounting. Consider the change of the D, second item, is a second of a federal grant from Department of Homeland Security, and the amount of thirty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars for private private equipment. The city's required grant is matching grant, is in the model seven thousand nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and it will be provided from state unit, I, two thousand plus dollars, I think. But are there any other things?
I don't want to remove the agenda, I don't care, but I do want to talk about that proposal.
Excellent.
Uh, President, I will move for the approval of this agenda, item A and B. Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Ma, supported by Councilman Gracious, to approve this agenda, item A and B. How many say yes?
Yeah, we could go ahead and vote on this question now.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you in favor? Motion here, Councilman.
Yes, can we, because of this, seems to be a resurgence of the West Nile virus, can we make sure that the information that's in our, our packet on the West Nile virus gets to the table fifteen and gives us a wide bracket?
I guess we'll step up the publication of this information.
Yeah, especially the thing about the birds that die, don't help handle those, because people need to tell their kids, you know, all that other stuff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I understand that it's listed under the public hearing, however, we had previously submitted the public hearing on the special use request of Mr. Samara. So we're going to move forward to our city matter, and we're going to have a city council discussion following.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to summarize, GP twelve fifty-two, the special use request of Mr. Samara, Extreme Conde LLC on behalf of the owner, Northland Center Michigan, to locate a recreation center in the Northland Mall. The planning commission held the public hearing on this matter on March twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen, made fatal recommendations. Public hearing was held by the city council on April twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, and was postponed due to the applicant not available. We do have Mr. Samara here, and I'd like to invite him up to make some brief comments, and then we have some other questions that have come to make up. I also have some quotes under the back.
And can you give the chair any advices addressed to the record?
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Nick Samara, owner and founder for Extreme Conde, family and estate center. We have different conditions to meet.
Yeah, there is a change.
Sixteen eighty-six Sanctuary Circle in Howell, Michigan, four eight eight five five. And we operate this business for over fifteen years. Family business owned, I have my own town, children, and very sensitive, because we're very, and very accurate about that safety for the children, the family, and providing good entertainment and fun for all the age, our age, from twelve and under. We are, we hold our location, we have a location in Michigan, one in San Juan, one in San Diego. It's very secure for the children, that they have time, wherever, that they understand they have children, the whole time, they're inside that blade area, and there's at least one over eighteen seven each child, I would say, if you're ready, there's. And we have a great, great, big for, here for the safety, we've been operating for over fifteen years, we don't have any major accidents with the whole time, and we are all the ten and new, and it's similar for safety. Our family is a member of that safety for the late home business.[1718.62] And we, uh, love to move to, uh, Southfield, the Southfield City for, um, to provide a good service for the community and to service our business in Southfield City.
And for the chair, just to add, um, he will be occupying the former TJ Maxx site of the Northland Mall. The mall is, um, also looking to them to generate more family business and foot traffic at that portion of the mall.
Right, thank you. How can we, uh, here on this, this is our time to have a discussion, Councilman Moss.
Yeah, the last, maybe you just have some questions, I mean, maybe that's a little concerned, but just some questions about the actual checking in, making sure that there was an adult, the, does the adult sit on the site the whole time? Can you walk us through what it actually looks like on a day-to-day basis of how to make sure you're only really keeping that kid at a certain age and it's not becoming a loitering place? Can you walk us through that?
Absolutely. When the parents are walking with the children, uh, we have a front desk, they check, uh, when we provide rest time for the children and, uh, the parents match their number with the children. And we make sure they're under 12 years old, over 12, they're not allowed to be in that equipment just for extra safety for that. Now, the parents are allowed to help the small children, nobody walk in, we will provide them with, uh, rest time. And we have, uh, both gate, uh, when they walk in, nobody allowed to leave without checking the rest time and match with that, parents for the children. And also we have, uh, employee walking around the, uh, the arena to make sure that everybody's safe.
So then, uh, how long have you? Thank you. Uh, you said that you, you, um, have a way of, the parent mostly with the child.
Absolutely.
All right, how do you do, how do you prove the age of the child? Do they have to have a birth certificate to show you some proof?
No, we, we, we have also the, uh, the age, uh, the weight and, uh, the height for the children, but it's very hard, we ask the parents, um, how old the child would make sure they're not, if they're afraid, then we, we can tell the parents for them to go down the inflatable, we, uh, ask the parents mostly.
One of the things that came up at the last minute here was how some children who are older look are small and, I mean, I don't know if that's what they feel, it made them happy, but you say have a 14-year-old that looks like they're eleven, you know, um, children can come in by themselves. I guess we got some worry about teenagers coming in by themselves, that's not permitted.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, and it has to be an adult and you're right about the, the size maybe, the, the most extreme position is the size more than the age, if they're smaller, I mean, they're having that for other smaller children, they may, but it's, uh, yeah.
But they might have a mind that's on older person, which could be true.
That's right, you know, they're always, we try to monitor, uh, all the time, make sure they're not, they're not supposed to. And that's all, they can't walk in, anyone less than, um, 18, they can't walk in without adults.
Okay, that's true.
And, yeah, the, the, we attract a very involved and it's for safety and mostly for, now, so we want to, um, the children.
So we can't come play for, we gotta hang out?
No, no, no.
That's, 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 I didn't know that.
There's another thing for the industry, the, the, uh, social.
A council is a name.
I know, that's, that's. Okay, so please, you have a case. Okay. Uh, what kind of programs are you going to offer?
Programs?
Curriculum programs, what are they going to do? Just play all day?
Absolutely, it's very active and, uh, it's mostly inflatable playground, it's safety safe for, uh, walls for the children, they can go climbing, there's climbing wall, there's tunnel they go through and between, there is against each other, sliding. It's more active, active, uh, activity for the children, physical activity more than gaming. We do have some gaming for the, the kids, the, the kids, uh, the most thing is physical activity to keep them active, playing and studying.
For the chair, Mr. Lam, for the chair, just, I want to clarify that they also, they also offer birthday parties, so they might have a group of kind of kids that comes as part of the birthday party, that's part of the business. They, they make a room and bring a cake and, I mean, all of us and young kids have gone to facilities like this, uh, one, all the hours.
We offer the same in the mall hours, we all have a dinner, we close at noon, Monday through Saturday, Sunday at 11:00.
And, uh, they are going to play all day.
That's right.
How can a gentleman play all day without rest, uh, what do you do without rest?
We do have seating areas for the parents and their children, we have very comfortable seating, couches and obviously they're welcome to rest, so sit down, it's happening in there. And we all want them to play all day, period, and reasonable, uh, portable, they can slide out all day, but when they get tired, they're welcome to walk out, they can come back any time or evening after hours, but we also, go ahead, sir.
So basically, they say?
And that's, you know, we, we don't like to tell their siblings, but it's fun for the children.
Well, they're paying the babies, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what to, is there any teaching of learning, anything? Deciding games?
It's mostly for physical, it's like you go to the gym and they play and they need the physical, especially in Michigan, we have a lot of, uh, down, winter time, long winter time, they spend all their time on the gaming and, uh, and, uh, with the games, the sitting and that, really, we, we like to provide, this is safe for my children, I love them to run and play and have physical activities to hold their, their bodies.
At 10 o'clock in the morning, right?
Well, not that, they tell me to visit us one day a month and the rest, the leader is for them to learn and they don't, any, any time.
Very good. One day a month and watch the rest of them?
I mean, they're not going to come to visit us every day, they're, uh, whatever they have time for, uh, activity or fun, they're welcome to come in and play.
Madam Chair.
Go to the casino for kids.
Councilor, Mr. Lam, are you familiar with Chuck E. Cheese? Where you, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lam, I'm sorry. Mr. Lam, are you familiar with like Chuck E. Cheese, where you go at the birthday party and take your kids, you, you, you have to stay with your kids, the children, they play and then you take the kids home, they're not there all day. It's, it's a play, the, you as a parent decide to take your children, they have fun and activity or party and then you take them home.
Okay, you just said, and they're not there all day?
No, no.
Right, I didn't hear that.
No.
They probably don't have a lot of business Monday through Friday during school.
All you'll have is, all right, what's the, um, what's the count of children, how many children can you?
I think we're building a lot, two, no more than 250 at one time.
250 children at one time?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, you're not wrong.
That's what the actuary for, I believe.
And this is every day in a week?
We, we never reach and mostly it's very, very slow during the weekday, the busiest campus at the weekend, we have the first party, the first party is for two hours, they stay there two hours and they leave, they play.
Well, it's not all birthday parties, the children coming in and you're supplying all the, all the equipment for playing and everything. I don't know, anyway, are you the owner?
Yes.
Okay. It's a, um, it's a different sort of keeping kids, um, I don't know, let me see, okay. I think, all right, I gotta say, I think children should have, uh, learning sessions, somebody to teach them, not to learn how to play. And if they can play all day, doesn't come in here, don't play. Can they speak English, or are they taught anything? What are they taught? The security, um, so many. What kind of security?
Oh, we have our employees and, uh, that's a whole place, secure for them, they can't leave the building without, uh.
Are they trained to?
Absolutely.
Handle, uh, children of 12 and under?
Very, very, very trained, myself and all my employees.
Okay, Councilman, uh, Councilman.
Chair, I got 14 grand, I love it, you can't wear a mouth. I was going to, uh, ask, uh, I see that there are going to be some machine, game machines?
Yes.
Where they top up coupons?
No, uh, it's going to be, uh, just scored for the games.
Okay, and then if you register, how many are you going to have with the city clerk?
I believe sixteen.
Yeah, if you register that with the clerk?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I actually, I want to offer you because I think it's neat that parents are going to be there with your kids and enjoy and that stuff. And one thing I was going to ask, though, I've been reading that trampolines are becoming very, very big. Uh, is that, uh, that the new craze? Did somebody say that trampoline, uh, that, really, a whole bunch of trampolines?
Yes.
I guess they are, they help franchising, uh, in other places?
Yeah, I saw a couple of places they have, yes, some people they.
Are you looking at that, not, not a list request, I mean, in the future?
I don't think, no, that, at work, I'm happy with what we have and I'm good with what I'm doing, I want some other, the, I'm, uh, familiar or, uh.
I wouldn't ask you, because my friendship, they asked me to take them, and I didn't know, I said, my cell phone.
There is a Councilman, uh, uh, a Councilman Gray.
Yes, uh, what is the age range for children that just want to come and, and play, I mean, not for the birthday parties, but for people that just want to play on the, on your game? And, uh, under, under, but I'm sure that there are, uh, a lower age range where they need to be able to, would you say, if a, if a parent brought in a two-year-old, would you allow them to be on the same?
We, we do have, uh, special, uh, sections for the toddler area.
Okay.
Just for the smaller ones, do they, even one-year-old, they have some areas for them to play with the parents' years.
Okay, uh, the other thing is, is not a question, but, uh, an observation, uh, our daughter lived in California for, uh, a number of years, and in California, and I'm sure that you're in that business, so you, you may know this, I don't know for years that we're not, but it would answer, uh, Mr. Lam's concern, um, they had to set up a similar thing, set up in three sections. And, uh, they had two sections of toys, uh, plenty of toys for the children to play on. They would play on one section for a period of time, the next section for the same period of time, and the third section was a room where they had a birthday party. So each section was like 45 minutes or an hour, and, uh, so there was a constant rotation of children coming in and going out because as they, as they exited the first one, one to second one, they bring the next group in to be in the first room. So it was a, it was a way to handle a large crowd and control how long the people were in there. So, um, that would, um, and this question about someone that's going to be there all day. So, um, and you've been in the, in the business for 15 years, you say?
Oh, 15.
Over 15 years, you've had no, no problems?
I don't have any.
And you won't allow a parent to leave without, uh?
Absolutely. That's great, I'm very, very happy with that. My children are tested and they're four children and nine three, I make sure my place stays for my children, very special, with any other children.
Yeah, because I, uh, I can imagine some parents saying, oh, I just have to run around the corner to a store to buy, uh, clothes or something, and I'll be right back.
It's happening a lot, but no, from the, when they walk in, also I forget to mention, uh, they, they sign waiver and.
Yes, you said that.
Yes, they, uh, and both, they, they have to stay with their children and then they're in there.
Okay, thank you.
A Councilman Gray.
Yeah, in reference to the parents, they need their children there. And stay with them, I'd like to see the parents who are going to stay three, four, five hours with their kids.
They.
I'm assuming they will drop them off, but.
They, they like to, what would offer them to, uh, alternate, that dad will stay with them two hours, the mom will shoping and then the mom come back and they.
Now, are the games free, everything is free once they're in?
The inflatable, uh, games is free, if they like to play, uh, games or the.
Do you have any electronic games?
Yes.
Are they free or they have to pay?
They have to, they for, uh, 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 the shiny games. They don't have to, but they, I mean, if they like to play with them, that's, that's all right. We only charge five dollars for, for the children to have, to hold them.
Yeah, but they have to put quarters in or thirty cents, like?
Yes, if they like to play the games, yes, they, they, uh.
How many games do you have?
Sixteen games.
How many? Sixteen, sixteen. I don't know, I don't know, I, I have, I have my doubts that the kids can't be there all day with the parents and the parents are not going to stay there, you know, I don't know.
Most, most of our customers, they stay for two hours, some of them stay for just half hour, just to get some activity for the children and then they take them.
And then they take their children home with them?
Yes. We, we, like, we come home.
And then the cost is what, five dollars a child?
Five dollars, yes.
To come in and stay all day if they want to?
If they like to, sure.
Any, any refreshments, anything like that?
We do have minor snack if they like to water and some, uh, juice, uh, if they can buy.
Right, and the pay, yeah.
Yes. The elder price, really, really, uh, meaningful for the.
Well, I feel, I feel as right for the kids. It's good for the, it's good for the kids for a little while and then, uh, for the kids who is interested in. Well, good luck to you.
Thank you, thank you.
I just have one question, you did say you're selling food on the premises or just money?
Just, no.
And, and Councilman Lam did, um, bring up a very interesting point, and I know this is a facility where the children come to play, but, um, have you thought about it, would you consider having a little book corner for the children, like the educator, a book is totally considered, uh, panel.
Um, it's, it's, it was the fact that my last year last time, we were playing with my son and we, we have some games to learn and she mentioned it will match her sort of needs of that corner and have, uh, books and if they like to read and they can sit down and enjoy. I'm mistaken, it's, uh, it's pretty, uh, had a last night, so we really consider my child, as you mentioned, anything, so, uh, that's, uh, so, uh, they need to read or.
All right, good times.
And that's, uh, that's not going to go.
And, and, uh, I would like to bring in, entertain a motion. A motion to approve this, uh, request.
Support.
Yeah, a motion by Councilman, uh, by Councilman Moss to approve GP 1252 for special use of the former TJ Maxx. All in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose?
Aye.
One, one out of the show. Thank you.
Thank you. The voice, okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to move to our communication portion of the agenda, and you have five minutes to address the council, and then you go behind, and you will, yeah, to end your remarks, and then five minutes. And we'll start the meeting. Good evening, council. Good evening to the residents, I continue to watch these meetings, thank you so much for wanting to inform. My name is Pamela Gerald, my address is P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-352-9188. Residents, you know I am a call away or a click away via email. Mr. Moss, we've talked about me saying something nice about the city of Southfield, so I'm going to do this for you tonight. Here are the things that Southfield should probably, mainly to have a city administrator like Mr. Jim Charette. I would like to credit Mr. Jim Charette and his leadership to these following meetings for urging the city to accept a program which allows us to hire four firefighters, but we still need seven more firefighters, for appointing the ten most qualified chiefs to run our public safety, that means the police department, Chief Eric Hawkins, and our fire department, Chief Keith Robb. Our city administrator is often known as the Wizard of Oz, and I would like to say thank you for finally hiring our two police cadets who were relieved and waiting for over three. who were relieved and waiting for over three and a half years, which I think that's unheard of. So to my ten cadets, who are now official police officers, Officer Brian Mauer, I hope I'm saying your last name correct, and Officer Frank Wogeny, welcome aboard again. But city officials, we still need twenty-eight to thirty more police officers. I do not believe in this number of police officers versus the ratio of people because crime just doesn't operate like that. I think you have some sophisticated criminals out there that knows when the police department is down, um, that that's an opportunity. So remember that a community is only as strong as its public safety. Residents, whenever you hear a sirens, and you've heard me say this before, someone's public safety is risking their lives for you, one of your neighbors, or someone that you know. But city, we still need to continue to pound the pavement about this contract for the police officers. So we've done everything else that the residents have talked about, but what about the police contract? The police still have not had an acceptable contract since two thousand and eight. So we have to, I guess, face the way. Do we give them a contract and continue to take confessions? Or do we just stay in limbo and they don't have a contract and they accept what you've already taken? Every union within this city has a quality. You guys have taken a lot from them, but have any of you members up there on council taken a fifteen percent pay cut? Have you taken confessions? I think I can answer that. The answer is no. You're still doing the free cars, free food, free trips, for gas? And you talk about modern technology? What about physical? What about Google? You're not taking these trips and bringing back anything that's really significant. So just think about it. Thank you.
Can you give an answer off the... Excuse me, so let's have a compliment land.
No, it's, uh, Pamela Gerald, I have an idea. Why don't you join the police department?
I'm considering. That's a cheerleader. That's a cheerleader, I'm considering it.
And name and address, name and address for the record, please.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Geraldina Masco. I've been staying here in Southfield. I don't have a personal address here and the people I stay with prefer not having an announcement. The microphone, you do have your contract there in the written material. I do have a message phone, this one's only, three three oh six four seven nineteen thirty-seven. I have been coming here for the purpose of sharing with you what I have learned over the past twenty years that I have never been taught in school about, I've never had been told in the mainstream press or media or elsewhere than the dominant controlled informational of all media. Today, I argue we are essentially on a coast-to-coast federal reservation. We have an unlawful regime in Washington DC. And it's difficult in five minutes to clarify what is to be said, but I know that fellow comments are near ritualizing meetings because these are private commercialized under this private commercial jurisdiction that we operate under. We're no longer acting under the principles of the republic. And the people who control the wealth of this nation have a plan to bring this nation down. Those are the owners of the, thanks to cartel. We see their mouthpieces on television, we don't see them personally. But all the financial and, um, fiscal problems that people and corporations and governments are having have been pre-planned and premeditated by those who now own this country, so-called lock, stop, and barrel to begin the old farming, um, phraseology. Last, uh, sometimes I have mentioned here what I have learned, for example, as Christians, I have learned that the organized Christian church is another commercial jurisdiction. And only those who are under the thumb of the establishment, for example, we call the IRS, will allow three oh, three oh one C three tax defense corporations to exist, allow certain people in the pulpit. Now, in New Mexico, where I have remained for forty-two years, my main associations, as well as in New Jersey, were with Christians and with, um, declared Jews. Now, there's a lot of other populations here from different ethnic backgrounds. And it doesn't really, we're not really delineated on our religious affiliations. It's only religious organizations that control our same people. As an example, I'd say, for example, the prayer makers. I think of them as those who control the Christian churches to a grand extent, and also the Jewish synagogues. But if you look at the square and compass that they're in sinia, it is the same symbol that the so-called Zionists use in the political state of Israel. But the people who control the political state of Israel are not in the ancestry, spiritually or physiologically, of Abraham, Elijah, and Jacob. They are apostates and also saved Jews. And the ones that hail the loudest by anti-Semitism are not even Semitic. And I read, uh, a, uh, report about, um, from, uh, Jack Bernstein, who wrote in nineteen eighty's, The Lives of an American Jew in Race Response to Israel. And he brought out some very interesting facts that are never, uh, in the mainstream press. Since I've been here, I have met some excellent people who are from the Muslim faith. But I can tell also that the Muslim organized religious associations that control those same people, and they only allow certain people as leaders and pulpit directors. I have encountered some Christian churches here. You haven't one yet, right? I'm not impressed with the Holy Spirit dominating from those places. And so I'd say that the six way of star that the so-called Zionists use as their sinia is the same symbol that the prayer makers use. And four representative of six, six, six sentences of anything that has to do with the Hebrew, uh, parphage. The, uh, the star is also called the star of David, it had nothing to do with David. Reportedly, Solomon, his son, embraced it as his sinia to one of the pagan wives that he married. So we are not told the truth about many things and even in the organizations we are members of, we are liable of leadership. And unless the good people of this nation are willing to realize that we are being misled and, uh, and deceived and infected. Ten seconds, yeah. Well, now, this is an authoritarian way of allowing the public to participate, but, and it's really like distracting and... It's really self unwelcome here to say, and...
This is a very true time.
Very, very, you could turn the mic on as well.
This is time to go to the issue instead of...
Evil people.
The next individual that we have, who is Mr. Gerard Martin.
Madam Chair. My name is, or used to be, Gerard Moss. Why did it change the name? But last month, a strange thing happened to me. On Monday, the evening of the twenty-second, I was renamed White Noise by a member of this council. As a result, my address has changed. My new address is whitenoise2012@gmail.com. Located in this city, in the city of Southfield. In the city of Sunny Rock Hill. One small, one week from that walking met door, like a village. Tonight, I am not here to talk about those nice guys of Warner, the planning commission's favorite, Walter Prun. Instead, I'm here tonight to make the following suggestion to council that you vote. In order to encourage greater citizens' participation in Southfield City Council, I propose that council award an annual prize to the person who provokes the greatest response from this council during the communicational portion of the agenda. The prize? The prize would be that the winner will have a picture, a four-page photo published in the Southfield City Calendar, reenacting their award-winning performance before council. This photo will be placed above one of the ones that would otherwise be reserved for Carver Lake, that costly park across the street from Farmington Hills. We're all sick and tired of Carver Lake. I know I am. For example, in last year's calendar alone, there were four, council, four. As my Cantonese friends from Southern China would say, death ye some say. That's right. Four, four paragraphs of none other than Carver Lake, also known as Denzel Park. Please take note, today is Jimmy Sword's birthday. The band who shot the Raydance would be a hundred and five today if he was still with us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
The next individual on the communication portion, who is Mr. Toby Rose. And who can you issue an address with?
Uh, Toby Rose, one seven zero zero one, New Jersey, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero seven five. Um, I'm here to talk about the racism in the city attorney's office and the Southfield Police and Boise District Court. Um, often I hear people say that the police are here to protect the public, but that was never the reason, the reason why police were created. Police came in the United States in eighteen fifty specifically as a means to enforce legal fictions created by the government on the population, on the public. In other words, they're a means of force of violence against the public to allow the rich to maintain control over the rest of society. And so when you see the police running around in their car, they're not there to protect you. They're there to use violence and force against you to impose government fiction. And fictions created in courts against you, for instance, Bank of America is a legal fiction, doesn't exist, it's not real. In fact, your courts will admit and recognize that they're legal fiction. But the court, uh, the, the individuals who call themselves the Southfield Police will use real force against real people to enforce this legal fiction in order to maintain control by those who have, uh, created the legal fiction of Bank of America to be able to act against those who actually, actually live and who are real people in the community of Southfield. So the Southfield Police do not serve the public. In fact, the Southfield Police and just police in general in the United States consider themselves almost as, as civilians. That's why they call us in the public civilians. And when you have civilians, that means you have a war. And so they have a war on drugs. The war on drugs is basically a race war, it's a race war against black people. Because in the mind of the police, you have to have an entity, the public entity, the homeowners, the taxpayers, the voters, those of us who live in Southfield. Southfield Police see us as an entity. The great gamble of it all is that they get us to pay them to attack us, to protect legal fiction of those who don't even live in Southfield, who basically use the community, the taxpayers, homeowners, voters, and those of us who live here, as a means to profit and enrich themselves at our expense. In order to stop this kind of stuff, you have to recognize what they are. They're not here for our safety. They are here to keep the legal fiction safe. And they have all these weapons, they have these courts, they have city attorneys to use against the public to maintain their control over the public. Now, we're paying all of these taxes. They're not for others. They're a bit fed up. The corporations, the banks, Boise District Court, city attorney, we did all legal fiction. They're not real, they're not tangible. But they use these things to make sure that, in this case, black people are kept in their place and that black people don't have control of their own community. That's why you don't see any black people in any of these kind of positions, like for instance. You look at the Southfield Police and they have what I call the top token, but you look at everybody else and you don't see any black people. In my community, I've been attacked repeatedly by these racist calls themselves the Southfield Police in my community. I've never had a black man arrest me in Southfield Police. I've been arrested so many times in my own community, a black community, by people who aren't even white because they call themselves the Southfield Police. Southfield Police...
No, no, Mr. because he has five minutes.
Well, you don't...
He has a right to... Go ahead, Mr. Rose.
Oh, okay. Um, and so what I'm saying is that when you have the Southfield Police, those calling themselves the Southfield, you come into the black community, they don't wanna identify themselves, they don't wanna be known. They say that, well, we have our pride, but yet they wanna know everything about the black community. Well, how can the black community trust them if they don't trust us? How can we respect them if they don't respect us? In other words, they see us as the flat, they see us as... You said women?
Like, one, eight.
Okay. And what this does is that black people feel that they're a problem. They feel like they don't have control of their own community. Another problem now with these, these racist calls themselves the Southfield Police is that they wanna take all the credit, but none of the responsibility. When anything bad happens, take up the blame for black men, you, black men, they're there. What's black men? Nice community, a community, community that are nice to live in. They wanna take all the credit. Oh, we did it all. But they didn't do anything to be a part of the community. Don't let them know who they are, they don't wanna be identified. And it's these kinds of problems that make it very difficult for black communities to be able to survive and to be able to thrive because you have these racists calling themselves police constantly demoralizing and destabilizing our community and preventing them from being all that they can be.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
All right, you know what you build to the left side of one of our agendas? And that is a compliment for you, council.
Your name is...
A compliment, council.
I have several things that, uh, that I have here, um, I had, and I didn't have to be proud of members, but also several, uh, emails on almost home animal rescue. Uh, Miss Charette, does something have to go together that you're not aware of?
Uh, no, uh, through the chair, uh, that was the third one, is Ward, who is, uh, contact person. I would just say this, that our animal shelter is a true no-kill animal shelter and that sometimes does lead to some disagreements and controversy. Uh, but other than that, I defer to, uh, Ms. Ward. And she's, she is very capable and, and assertive.
If I could, to, to the chair, um, they're, we don't want to tell them operating in the animal shelter now since two thousand and six. And they are a true no-kill shelter. And despite, you know, in the past, what we did is we picked up animals, we put them there in a really temporary situation, and then we paid somebody to take them up to the Michigan Maine Society, and then we paid the Michigan Maine Society storage fees as well as euthanasia fees. And there was a pretty, a pretty significant rate of euthanasia of those animals. This group came in, Almost Home came in, came before the council, and they are a true no-kill. Um, but what that means, I think, is, can be a different philosophy out there. So they're, they have volunteers, and this is kind of historically been a situation with the group. They'll have volunteers that maybe think that at, at some point, an animal that Almost Home is holding, um, because it's beneficial for an extended period, not necessarily adoptable in terms of its current temperament, um, maybe it needs extensive medical type treatment. And some people, even ascribed to the no-kill philosophy, will say that sometimes difficult decisions have to be made. And maybe some of those animals should be euthanized because, you know, what kind of life do they have in the shelter? Um, let's say they're there a year or two. Um, let's say they're there a year or two before they're able to be adopted out. Some people think that, you know, that's not necessarily humane for that animal. So I think what, what is happening, there are all kinds of issues in terms of what's the appropriate true no-kill philosophy. And I've, I've done some research, because, you know, again, I think that there have been issues with, with the shelter, Almost Home's upset and disapproving with us. And I, and I think you find it all over. Oakland County just went through it with their shelter. Berkeley just went through it with their shelter. And there are different philosophies of the volunteers and the people that work there. And so, what's happened now is, um, and a lot of this has been tweeted to the mayor's office, and I think now there is another group of volunteers that are saying, well, we want the whole story told. So now they're emailing all the council people, and meeting houses as well. And I think sometimes you weren't even aware of maybe what the first volunteers group were coming at, so you're taking the second. But I think what's happening, there is an issue with the operation manager that they hired. Um, I have been, um, I already met with the, the folks at Almost Home, we discussed the situation. Um, they are determining what they are going to do in terms of the employment of that individual. That has been a, a real, um, significant issue with all of the volunteers, is that person the right person to be operating on behalf of Almost Home? And I, I don't have an answer for you tonight, but I think that totally I will. But I think all you're seeing again are some of the volunteers that have been with Almost Home for many years, that are saying, you know, we still believe in what Almost Home is doing. You know, they believe in Gail and Gail Montgomery, who was the founder, and, and so they're showing you their support. But I think, as you say, we've heard from the other volunteers on the other side, who maybe are no longer working there, who have said, you know, we don't really believe that it's humane in terms of some of the, the facts of these laws have been there for a extended period. So, you know, I'm trying to look through it. They're all good-intentioned people. Every one of them, you know, really does believe in, in trying to do the best for the animals. And so, I think it's just trying to get to make sure that our shelter is run correctly and that the animals are treated right, and that the public and our residents, they go there and adopt an animal and, and we're successful.
But you know, I, you made all the letters and being a lover of animals, uh, and, and having put down one here and there through my lifetime, uh, it's a very difficult situation, but the time comes when you really, uh, have to do something and feel strong about, uh, you have the animal. And so, I understand what their philosophy is, but in reality, if you're a dog lover or animal lover, it has to come a time when, when it's, it's actually the use of the animal to allow it to continue. Uh, I mean, it's, uh, and, and so I, I got all these things, and I have an answer of my own, that we worked this out with, with an understanding, uh, and both sides have some kind of agreement, but, you know, sometimes it comes a time when we can't keep the animal alive forever. Uh, the other one I had is that Royal Oak has passed a dog ordinance, and it goes into effect, uh, I think your stall secured a million dollars in liability insurance at post-sign. Anyway, they have that ordinance coming up, and, uh, the request was made also online that, uh, that we review the dog ordinance to see about the pitfalls, and, uh, and it seems like there's another problem in the city with them. So I'd just like to have it reviewed, uh, you know, I know we really looked over that ordinance.
We, we did, just a few years ago, and we at that time considered the, the pit bull issue. Um, we could certainly get with Bob White, the animal control officer, and see if, if we're having a problem, you know, and it's significant in terms of danger signs, and we give it to that ordinance again.
And the other one, the other forward, uh, can you get that, Mr.?
Of council is moving forward on the dangerous animals and other animal control shelters.
We need more.
Of course, yeah. The USR review, we can definitely address that.
In terms of dangerous sources in the community, is that what you're saying? And what about why?
And support the council.
If I may make a comment, if I may. I mean, you can't assume that a dog is dangerous just because it's breed. Why would we be worried about it? Right. And, and that's worth, remember, the consideration a few years back was, you know, because some of the cities were going specific, um, breed legislation, and we did not go in that direction. We, we came up with some, uh, changes to the animal control ordinance that did be what we could do with danger signs, but it was not breed-specific. So, if, you know, I, I agree with you that it, it could be any dog, it's a generally a people problem.
No. I'm not going to get into that. I, I just recommend that you look at it, because it's conservative and legislative, and they give me okay, so I'm not going to ignore it. Uh, the other thing that I'd like to mention to, oh, Mr. Sharet, is there's a truck park in that, it's your sign ordinance, the truck park with a big sign on it, um, on the east side of the street, about Medical Mill, O'Hana.
Uh, we have dealt with that.
Oh, you've dealt with it.
Yeah, we dealt with it this weekend, contacted the, the individual. We'll make sure that, that the person's in compliance, but we did see that this weekend.
The other thing I'd just like to say to my friend, that Cairo, who was back over thirty years, he respected the job he did, um, and I feel that, uh, that, uh, my thoughts today were fully expressed in, like, what that, um, thank you, councilwoman, be one.
Thank you. I just want to mention regarding Almost Home, I think, I don't know what people think about this, but with the, um, economy away there, and so many people losing their jobs and, and, uh, meaning the economy's depressed, unfortunately, a lot of times, the families do not have their best, and have to go into shelters, and that's a very sad thing for families that do, but that can result in times overcrowding or anything. Um, I know there's people at Almost Home, and I know they, they do their best to, they care for the animals, um, they spend a lot of money on medical care for them. Um, I think we have to be very cautious when we, um, look at something like this and not be, you know, too willing to condemn, but make sure we understand what you're from that. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, um, back to the, uh, dangerous, uh, dog issue, and I do agree with council and teamwork, not necessarily the dog, sometimes it's how the owner trains the dog. Although, it's interesting what the community for Royal Oak did, is that they, they didn't outright ban specific breeds, but what they said, they identified more breeds that were prone to, to attacking humans or, or fighting, and the owner had to have a certain amount of liability insurance, uh, takes classes with the dog. Um, and I'm not sure what the other stipulations were. So I think that's a happy medium, and I think that was a compromise that, that Royal Oak looked into. So I would be in favor of, of Southfield taking a look at that as well. Uh, but I do want to review, um, two events that happened, that have happened, uh, since the last, uh, council meeting. Uh, Mayor Lawrence, Court Banks, and myself participated in Comcast Care Day at Matt and Tyre Elementary, uh, with fourth graders there, assembling food packages, uh, food packages that are easily, uh, able to be put together once they're delivered to the homes of the people in need. And it's a great event, it's the second year that I've participated, you get to actually work hands-on with the students in Southfield, um, and, uh, make sure that those who are in need, uh, get, get the supplies they need so that they don't, uh, go hungry at night. And not only is there an active, uh, making sure that these food packages are sent out globally, but they're also sent out locally, so you really are helping out families, um, suffering quietly in your own backyard. So I, I would be happy to participate in that, to look forward to that event again next year. The second event that we, uh, in the city supported, uh, was a fundraising for our obelisk project, coasting the baseline. Um, and for those, just as a refresher, um, David Farr, who's an international known artist, uh, came to the city council in August. There was a recent article in the Southfield Sun about this that I think really outlines what the project is. It's commemorating the historic significance of Eight Mile Road, which is on our city's southern border, of course, um, which is the original correctly surveyed line, which helped determine the townships for the rest of the state of Michigan, all the way from Lake St. Clair to Lake Michigan. So every community, uh, that has a road that actually goes along the baseline is called Baseline Road, and of course, here Baseline Road is Eight Mile Road. So, we're the fourth community to participate in this commemoration of, of our early surveyors and our early Michigan history. The other communities are Novi, Northville, and Farmington, so it's moving kind of east into Southfield. And we are going to be setting up kind of a, a, a marker, uh, which is commemorative of the earliest state used in, in the surveying system, it's an obelisk, the shape of the Washington Monument, um, ten-foot tall, and kind of creating a nice welcoming space at the corner of Rutland and Eight Mile Road. Uh, we did not, we, only with discussion before council, we did not want to put city funds into this, um, not only because we don't want to, uh, put city funds into something that we could otherwise fundraise for, but we want to make sure as we kick off this public art project, it publicly supports, uh, that we have a community involved in every step of the way, um, and we really are raising funds from a community that supports this type of project. So that's where I'll make my plug. The Southfield Community Foundation is the group that is going to be kind of depository for donations, uh, to see this project kind of come to fruition, and you can go to their website and donate. Um, but there's a great article in the Southfield Sun, recent Southfield Sun, on it, they can really learn about the history of the project, the history of the actual surveying, uh, and what it looks like. It's going to be a nice welcoming space, uh, into the city along Eight Mile Road, and we, uh, we have a fundraising goal of thirty thousand dollars. We're probably about a third of the way there. And when we get about half of the way there, we can actually order the granite, um, and continue to fundraise for some of the hardscaping and the landscaping that goes with it. So, I just want to make sure that the residents of Southfield knew about that, and are able to, if you can, if you support public art, if you support the history of Michigan, uh, please support this project. Thank you.
Complimentation.
Yes, uh, I'd like, also what to add on to that is, the artist is doing just right. He has up to this point down the other street, uh, with, with no, uh, had no cost to the community. And, uh, I was at the kickoff, uh, meeting, and to listen to him talk about this project, it is obvious that he, this passion with him, and he, he would really like to see it go from Lake St. Clair all the way to Lake Michigan. So, uh, it's a, it's a wonderful project, and, uh, uh, Mr. Moss didn't tell you, but if you donate a certain amount of money, you can have it work with your name on it in that, uh, area where the obelisk is. The, the other thing that I'm going to bring up is, uh, we got a, I, as I say, I got a copy in my baggies that they, uh, our city administrators and, um, it's a copy from Crane's business about the, uh, smart meters. And about a year or so ago, there was a, there were a number of meetings that we held with people that were concerned about having the smart meters, whether they wanted them or they could refuse to have them. Well, it's gone through the process, and the Michigan Public Service Commission has made a decision that you can have a smart meter, except it's going to cost, it's going to cost you sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents to have the meter as a one-time thing, plus a nine dollars and eighty cents a month, monthly fee afterwards. So, anyone that has a smart meter, or does not, excuse me, does not want a smart meter, anyone that does not want a smart meter is going to cost you sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents, and plus nine dollars and eighty cents a month. So, be prepared. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Then we add, and I have, as we move into prom season, with all of the seniors that will be joining the activities, they go along with graduation, be safe, be responsible, and think about your future. So enjoy yourself, but be safe and be responsible. Who goes to the mayor's side of the conference, gentlemen?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, we are approaching the Memorial Day holiday, and the city of Southfield has a long tradition of assembling and having a program honoring those who gave their lives in service. It is always, uh, a very touching, a very memorable occasion, and again, this Friday at nine o'clock a.m., we will again assemble for Memorial Day program. And we are honored this time to have, along with bringing the military, uh, season, we are honored this time to have Major General Gregory Vane, who will be speaking, because he's a president of military veterans and seniors. But as an added special touch, he will be landing on the front lines with a Black Hawk helicopter. So, uh, in addition, if I have this amazing, uh, representative from the military, we'll also get to see our tax dollars and what a Black Hawk helicopter look like. But most of all, it'll be an opportunity, and I invite my veterans to come out, because I'm always, the programs are about the families, the, uh, the veterans, um, in honoring their service and honoring those that gave the ultimate sacrifice. And so, it's about you, and I do invite our veterans to come out and enjoy, and join us this Friday. And that is, uh, the date of this Friday is May twenty-four at seven a.m., and it will be at, in the front of city hall. In addition, as always, I've had, um, my mayor's roundtable to bring people in, um, to discuss the issues, uh, in the city, and we're having a very popular one, and that is code enforcement. It will be this Wednesday at the library, and it will be, uh, this Wednesday, May twenty-second at seven o'clock p.m. Uh, our code enforcement and, and our city administrator and staff and others will be there to discuss, uh, code enforcementations in the city. This is a session where you are educated, you're told, uh, what we're doing to fight blight in our city. I can't tell you how many people compliment us as a city on the job that we're doing in fighting blight. Um, and it just doesn't happen without teamwork in the city, cities being open-minded administrators, but also the residents. So I do invite you to come out and be going to attend. Uh, please, it's Wednesday, this Wednesday, May twenty-second at seven p.m. at our city library. And I just want to echo, um, the council president's advice about safety during the time. Our police department did a wonderful job with municipal high, highlighting, um, what happens when you are impaired and drinking. And this is just amazing time in your life. My nephew is, uh, graduating, and he was saying, this is the most important day in my life. And I said, son, it's going to be a happy day, but you have a lot more and many, many more exciting days in your life, and I want you to live, to, uh, to enjoy them, and to, uh, be able to live a full life. So just, I just want to echo that, because so often we get excited about the night, and we forget to tell our, you know, people how much we love them, and we want them to be safe.
All right, thank you. We've got to move to the next item on our agenda, which is an amendment to Chapter ninety-nine of the Sign Ordinance. But prior to that, our city administrator is going to give us just a brief update we have made through this process, and we are all very, very excited about the new change in the ordinance, Mr. Sharet.
Absolutely. Uh, by way of introduction, uh, I'd like to recognize the outstanding staff work across a number of departments, uh, planning, legal, and business outreach, and the effort headed up by Mr. Edgar Dela of our building department, a recognized expert in signage within a diversified community. Uh, I'd like to indicate that the mayor and city council have laborered hard over this subject to make our sign ordinance more business-friendly while protecting the integrity and quiet enjoyment of the neighborhoods. Uh, at this point, I would suggest, uh, that this matter be turned over to attorney, yes, Susan Ward, our legal department, for a review of the recommended updated ordinance.
Thank you. Um, we have taken sign ordinance, and we are proposing enough to repeal the existing sign ordinance and introduce the entire new sign ordinance. Um, in general, there are three major changes that we're proposing to make tonight. All of these have been reviewed extensively with the council. Uh, we've had several committee, the whole meeting discussions on this, and I think this document from a view does encompass all of the discussions that we've had over the past many, many months. So, number one, um, this new ordinance will now permit electronic signs. Um, those will be permitted, but with certain restrictions and certain regulations. They will be permitted in every zoning district. Um, there will be regulations in terms of how often they can change, what happens in the evening hours, do they have to turn off, do they, can they stay on? The discussion that we had, there was a consent- The discussion that we had, there was a consensus of council with respect to that issue was, if a business is operating throughout the night hours, the sign can continue to function. Otherwise, then the sign would be turned off at eleven o'clock at night and wouldn't go back on until the morning hours. So you'll see that language in here. There's also regulations in terms of how bright these signs can be. Mr. Gardner has researched in terms of what's the appropriate standard that's now in here. Again, all of those were discussed extensively with council, all of the regulations. So I think in terms of those amendments, those changes for electronic signs, again, all of those were really fully developed with council. The next change that you'll see within the ordinance has to do with additional wall sign allowances on high-rise buildings. And that was really discussed most extensively in our last committee, the whole discussion. And the council, there was a consensus of council to amend the ordinance to indicate that wall allowances will be increased on high-rise buildings, so that a frontage of a building, you will take ten percent of the frontage, the overall frontage, and there's a definition of frontage, so there won't be any question of that. And with that ten percent now, that is your total allowance to identify your tenants. You can put those signs now, that ten percent can be dicked up any way that the property owner sees fit. So he can put, could put it on a different side of the building, he could put it, you know, different sizes of the signs, all within the ten percent. So the flexibility to the property owner has been immensely improved. And so that's the change on the high-rise buildings. There also is a definition of high-rise building in there. Generally, it's the standards the building code adopts, and that's the standard of fifty-five feet from the lowest point of client department vehicular access. In general, it's the ground level. And fifty-five feet in general, again, is roughly five stories. So if a building meets that threshold, it's a high-rise building. Now, I know there has been some internal discussion among staff that, you know, what happens if a building is four-story and it doesn't meet this threshold? We discussed with council at the last committee, the whole meeting, all of the discussion was on the high-rise. And so what we thought was, that's what we put in here, because that's what we felt we had to come from, well, the council was high-rise buildings. If in fact council is, we didn't have that discussion tonight, but if there is a consensus of council that we'd like to also look at, what would the sign allowances be for, say, a four-story, maybe a mid-rise building? We'd be happy to, you know, put that on an upcoming COW meeting, and we'll explore that with you. Right now, the change for the increase in the wall sign to identify tenants has been expanded for high-rise. So that's all you'll see in here at this point. And then the third general amendment here, I think is probably most near and dear to us, Jordan, that that will limit the height of the ground support signs from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet. In addition, the columns that support the ground support sign will have to be enclosed at least fifty percent of the width of the sign, and then there will be landscaping. So we both have, in general, this whole sign book, because now it will be, and we showed photographs the last COW meeting, of what this would look like by going to the standard. So that standard now has been incorporated, as well as the decrease from twenty-five to fifteen feet. Some of the other minor changes, and I just, in my letter, I just indicated other minor changes, but one of those has to do with the parapet. Council had the consensus, I believe, that, with Mr. Gardner, that the parapet, no matter how high it goes up on the building, the sign can't extend above that, the forty-two-inch threshold, so that's in here. The flag, there was no consensus about releasing the flag, so that we did not incorporate into this ordinance. So I think in terms of everything that Mr. Cumberford, Mr. Gardner, myself had in our notes, I believe we've incorporated. If you see anything that we missed, I even, I believe we have Mr. Fraser's comments about, you know, hours of operation, open, close, those are now allowed. So all of those things, I think we got, and again, there's an interest of council to have a discussion about mid-rise, we certainly are ready and willing to do that.
Okay, let's do a couple things. Let's see if there is a consensus that we have a discussion on the sign allowance for mid-rise buildings.
Mayor, no.
Yes, yes. So we will move that forward, Mr. Schrader, and later things to happen.
We'll put that on the future edits list.
Okay, thank you. Complimentation.
You might take a look at anything up to, for, the floor or something. So that if...
Now, that's going to be mid-rise, but anything short of high-rise, that will be allowing.
And in doing so, the mortgage sign that is on twelve mile, that yellow thing, it also has the ground sign. I'd like to get that looked at as an example of, I think it's two-story, is that, is that two-story, three-story, one-story? That's a one-story. Because, you know, they think residential, because South, South looks more than residential, and that's anything that's up. And I think that is way overuse of the sentence, but that's my opinion. The other question I had is, the height is now twenty-five feet on that ground sign?
The, this ordinance would now, the maximum sign, the ground support sign, the maximum height is fifteen feet. It used to be twenty-five. So going forward, any ground support sign going in would be limited to fifteen feet.
The concern I hear is, and I got to see a plan with the ground sign, and the pedestal, there's hardly no pedestal, and so when you put evergreens in front of it, the fifteen feet, you know, loses the message. Okay, so how, is it total, is it above the pedestal?
No, it's a total fifteen feet, and I think that example that you're suggesting, for example, at the Home Depot site, where the landscaping has grown and matured such that it's now kind of covering up the sign. And I think what needs to happen is, when the landscape plans are submitted on these signs, there needs to be some discussion about making sure that the landscape that's installed is more of a, you know, a low-growing type. This really is not conducive to have evergreens that are going to obscure the sign.
A few of these get tulips, for example. You know, I hate the tulips. Have they had out here in front, you're talking about almost a foot and a half high?
But that would be more the issue on a garden ground sign. The garden ground sign, right, it's five feet. Garden ground sign is limited to five feet. So certainly the issue of landscaping now becomes more problematic when you're talking about a garden ground sign. The ground support sign, fifteen feet, other than some evergreens, maybe...
Look, I know that it's the garden sign, I think that was a tough... I see a rendering of twelve mile and the usher at the church, they've got a corner sign going up, and even the rendering shows plants, and it hides the Southfield that's on the side, and I'm just wondering, they said that that was city code. And you ready with that permit yet?
No, I'm not. I'm through the chair, it's council casting. I've been in meetings, several meetings, and they've been fleshing out the design.
I am on that, which is extensive use of landscaping, but I think that the way that they've designed it, it's kind of like a tiered look to it, that it's still going to meet ordinance requirements, and they're working with the landscaping, incorporating it into the sign, and they're very keenly aware of not covering up the sign itself. So I have been talking to them.
Word Southfield, one second, about that, Highland Park, the ground. Word Southfield?
I think it's actually higher than that off the ground word, Southfield, but I believe they're putting the landscaping in, so they're going to have the word Southfield, and then they're going to have like a planter box area, curved planter box area, and then above, and that's where landscaping or annuals are going to be placed. And then above that, over to another side, is going to be Highland Park, you know, the other section of it. So they, they're laying it out with that in mind. We've been going through that extensively, and we're going to be working with the landscaping department, too.
They did a service to the congregation raising funds for all these things, Sunday, and that was, some of the individuals who did the rendering were saying that you can't see the word Southfield. And I think it's Southfield Christian Heights, and maybe it's a way they put the bush in front of the S or something, but there was just a concern of the congregation, and so I started matching that.
I'll make sure I look into it when we have another meeting about it, but I was pretty excited about it, actually, it was a very nice looking sign.
Yes, absolutely. What, you see, or you ever read it?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. Chair.
Have we done anything about color, about restricting color signs? I know, I'll let you enter that first now.
If I might, Chair, Councilwoman Seymour. The only area where we're going to limit color would be on electronic signs, being that they can be a single color, not talking about what color, other than in residential, where they're going to be amber color, but that they'll be a single color, not a specific color, but a single color. You do tend, when you go down the road of trying to control color, sometimes the courts can look at it as a part of controlling content if color is directly related to the logo of a corporation. So we tend to, at least in the ordinance, as far back as it's ever been written, there would never control on any sort of colors.
I think we ought to invest some consideration, because one that Councilman Schrader's talking about, the orange, large orange letter, small building, which was once a central building, that should never, in my opinion, be allowed. A community that we surround, that shall be named, has a law that limits color, and I, the reason I noticed is I saw in the newspaper, in the Southwood Sun, actually, that they were having a public hearing, because this applicant wanted to have a different color, they allow green, blue, green, and something like that, so they do keep it from going, you know, a public discussion kind of thing. And I think we, I mean, they do have a public hearing, so they can change it, they can get, you know, they, I don't think the courts would object to that, but if they do it, I'd like to give some thought to that, because, you know, that white orange large sign is a nightmare. I don't think anybody's really involved about that. It just doesn't, I mean, it doesn't look good.
I think also the conversation that, actually, to the whole, council as a whole, the conversation about sizes of signs on other types of office buildings relates directly to something like that, to a comment like that, not only does the color affect what it looks like, but obviously the overall size affects that. And that's why in the high-rise section, the fact that you have a very tall building, very great distance from the road, those greater allowances make sense on those buildings, because they're taller letters that need to be visible from a greater distance, and that distance and height gives a, gives an effect to make the sign actually look smaller or less intense. So when you go down to smaller buildings, lower buildings, and you get larger height signs, they do look like they're a little bit too large for the building. Currently, we allow two hundred square foot for wall signs, giving an example, the 1-800 law firm, that sign, and the sign on the front that says I T T, both of those signs combined are less than two hundred square foot, and that is a four-story building.
Well, the one on Southfield is quite arid, but I mean, if it's the company logo, and there's color and words in them, then I think so should be exceptional, but in fact, I don't, I don't know why that happens, but I'd like to invest some consideration in that.
I think we could look at that, but I do think that it is, it is certainly open door to challenge, because you do have companies, I mean, Home Depot's letters are orange, and that's, that's uniform throughout the country, so that's on a water building, too. Right, but then you're talking more color with size, so we'll look at it, I mean, we'll try to...
Well, I'm talking about office building, or a regular, you know, not a, not a Home Depot, because that is, that's to me a different, that's a different set of buildings, but a standard office building or something, or just like the one we're talking about that has the orange sign. That didn't have to be orange, that was, at least I don't think it did, but it's later, because a light can't be...
Well, I was going to say, we'll definitely have a look at that.
Yeah, Chair, you ready for Bush?
I'm not yet. Complimentation.
Yes, one of the things that, I don't know that it's in here, not even though we have any ordinance or rules, but when a business goes out of business, and they have a sign under building, we are having to take it down, take it off, so that it's, and one of the, one of the ones that I just drove by today is the Uptown Eatery on Twelve Mile Road.
There's one in Green, it's all that upside down.
Go ahead. But it would be, you know, I'd like to see the owner take the sign down or hang over it, or something that, when they, when they close business, so that it doesn't default everything.
Through the chair to Councilman Fraser, that's an interesting point, because you always have to balance, especially on ground signage or any other signage, that what I'm hearing from the people who are trying to lease these buildings, is that's an incentive to people when they come in, that sign is currently there, especially on the ground sign, and probably not on all sign areas much. And I believe Uptown Eatery will be reinforced.
Discovered away.
Right, right. But on, for instance, a regular point like the former Jenny's Restaurant, what happened there was, they actually took the faces out of the sign, and what happens when you do that, is not only does it create a nicer look, but it creates a situation where you have the elements, where you can, et cetera, going into an electrical, a box that's supposed to be enclosed in a plastic face, to make sure that you don't get water in. So what happens is water gets in every electrical socket, every electrical wire, everything. So I actually had them do some, turn the faces around and put them back in, so that we didn't have further decay of the signs that they're going to be using for the new Panera Bread. So given kind of that situation, I asked them, please turn it, turn it around, or maybe cover the whole thing up with a single color on the face, so I do ask that when that happens, when it's generally an extended period of time.
I know there's a garden ground sign on Twelve Mile Road that's right nearby, where they have a tar board.
Yes. Unfortunately, again, that is a ground sign that most, you know, it's fairly expensive to remove a ground sign when you can reuse it at a site. And most people, when they're looking at a new building, if they see something like that, that's, that's a plus to them, they have that sign there. So asking them to remove something like a ground sign probably would be...
Yeah, I understand, because it would cost them, a lot of money to put it back in again. But for those that are just like nailed on or passionate to the building, something that can be taken off that would get rid of the thing without causing additional problems with tourists, it's like the Ford.
Interesting.
If I might add something, there's, through the chair, the first, the ordinance does have considerations to eliminate signs. The court official can order one to be removed. Some are just going to take the court action to do it, because you're actually going on somebody's property to remove somebody's property, so it's just a thing of view. Thanks.
I have to say, this is a very important ordinance that we will soon hopefully adopt and will be introducing, because it's going to change actually, though, the appearance of our city, and it's going to be good for the way our city is viewed, and certainly it is the city, primarily with our business district. I have to say, I do not want to take the sole pan on the mat for the garden ground sign, because with my colleagues that agreed to put in the ordinance, it was a team effort, but we will, we'll take a motion.
Chair.
I hope...
I agree that we approved your reading through the chapter 99 sign ordinance.
Support.
Yeah. Yeah, that ordinance number, please?
Sixteen oh seven, two, one six zero seven.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Frasier, supported by Councilman Frasier, to approve the ordinance for the sign in our building, right, all the favor.
Aye.
We impose motion Frasier.
Chair, I move that we introduce ordinance number sixteen oh seven. Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Frasier, supported by Councilman Tumon, to introduce ordinance to the rules that our favor.
Aye.
I oppose motion Frasier. Next slide. I am one of the gentlemen, the Plum Harbor fireworks committee that we need to.
Madam President, the Plum Harbor Country Club has respectfully requested that your honorable body grant commission for aerial fireworks display on Saturday, June twenty-ninth, two thousand and thirteen, with a potential ready date for Sunday, June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. The details have been reviewed by our fireworks department. The Zambelli Fireworks Management Company is the contractor to perform the fireworks displays, and you know, the Zambelli Fireworks had an outstanding performance record, which is regarded as safe. This company has filed the appropriate insurance documents, and the site and display program is in compliance with our fireworks code requirement. The cost for the event is the full refundability of Plum Harbor Country Club, however, a certificate of insurance includes the city of Southfield and an additional insurer.
So is there a motion?
So who?
Support. We have a motion by Councilman Frasier, supported by Councilman Tumon, to approve the Plum Harbor fireworks committee, all the favor.
Aye.
We impose motion.
Next, Madam President, question or comment on that, too. I was on Facebook, and a friend had posted this, and so I guess fireworks season now in Michigan, because the state had removed the limitations, so maybe through our state attorney, just a reminder that we have still implemented limitations on fireworks during the summer months here, here in South.
We have, but for those periods that the state has said we can't regulate, although I did notice that there was a bill introduced to remove that inability of the city to regulate during those times, like during those nighttime hours, so we'll see where that goes, but you're actually right, we still do regulate fireworks in the city, but for those few holidays.
Right, so it's not fireworks season here in South.
Well, here's the, we had a pickup truck last night, didn't we?
And then, not supposed to be a couple.
There's about thirty of them.
All right, next slide, one of our agenda, Deputy Secretary, do you have a moment?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are several changes to the council meeting schedule that are proposed here tonight. First is to change the starting time of the COW meeting scheduled for Monday, June third, changing to five P M. We're requesting to schedule another COW committee of the whole meeting for June tenth, two thousand and thirteen, for seven P M. Proposed cancellation of the committee of the whole meeting already scheduled for Monday, August twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, and we schedule a committee of the whole meeting for Monday, August nineteenth, at seven P M.
Chair, I move that any recommendations by the deputy, since we're being approved.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Frasier, supported by Councilman.
Macassu.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Council, Senator Macassu, supported by Councilman Macassu, makes the proposed changes that I see, Council, you the all the favor.
Aye.
We oppose motion. Are there any other?
Madam Chair, I have, I have these two other items that I forgot to mention in the council portion. Water Resources Commission, Eric, is asking that they be allowed to go into the basement of homes to obtain measurements of the surface elevations in your home, and there is a telephone number to make an appointment, but having forgotten the appointment, and then they showed up at my home today, and of course, I don't know, they do whatever they had to do, but for those who may, someone from the Water Resources Commission come to your door, check credentials, but try to walk away with them. It's very important that they get those measurements. Secondly, the other item is that curb appeal, well, started the curb, those who are heading grass and going grass onto the curbs, there's nobody that sweeps the curbs, except you, and so, you, your neighbor, a neighbor, and sweep your street, the sweeper comes by on a regular basis, but, you know, you're looking at that for a couple, three weeks, it looks ugly. So get a broom, and brush, and shovel, and sweep your street, sweep your curb, and make the neighborhood look better.
It's really, the city wants to do it, this is the time where we really want to make all the neighborhoods, our own property, look good, so we think the bill is very, make Southfield shine, so, Councilman.
I'd like to ask the, the, what are we going to be majoring here?
Right?
What are they, the Water Resources, what are they going to be majoring?
Let me read it. The, open, the County Water Resources Commissioner's office is working on ways to better serve our sewer customers. As part of this program, we'll be working in the neighborhood to obtain important information about your sewers. Information is necessary to allow us to perform a computer analysis of the sanitary sewer system. You can help us collect the information by allowing one of our engineering budgets, O H M, to measure the depth of your basement, even if you do not have a reason, you still need to obtain measurements of the ground surface elevations next to your home. Derek Kinke from the, from the O H M is responsible for tracking the required information for the computer analysis. Please make an appointment with him at calling seven three four eight nine one two four five three, lead date between the hours seven and seven. The cooperation is greatly appreciated. We're going to stay in and out quick.
No, Chair, I would, I would think that the city council, we should be advertising this, this is happening in our city, I was somewhere, I haven't gotten a letter, and there's just so many things happening, and what do their credentials look like? It seems something we could put on table fifteen. So if you could share that letter, Madam Chair.
I'll give it to you.
But I, I. I feel like if something like that is happening in our city, we should be, it should be appealed to the city, and we should be.
We're going to research that for our communication.
Madam Chair. I would just like to.
I would like to take a moment, but not necessarily this time, Council.
Okay.
I just want to reinforce what Mayor Ryan said, it's very important when, when this works itself, that people know what their credentials look like, because there are a lot of people that will try to be in their homes that don't have the right credentials, could falsify credentials, so it's extremely important for revenue security that we make it clear what they're, what they, what they're going to be offering as credentials, and I mean, that's, we've got to protect our security by residents, that comes first.
Be very good.
So let's publicize it, as Mayor Ryan suggests, you get it on cable, so make sure that they do, you know, show what things are, make it as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Sherratt.
Yes, without taking too much time, I just would like to comment, for public information, there was a comment made about contract procedures and negotiations, terminology like broadening is not helpful, also not accurate, we use negotiation process, and also, if we need to, judicial process of arbitration, which is a civilized and disciplined way to arrive at a contract. So I would also like to bring the attention of Council to do a development with regard to the SAFER Grant, because the SAFER Grant was mentioned in public comment. We received just this weekend a notification that the team wants more information and an impact statement, in order for us to get a, an extension, which was supposed to be pretty much automatic, but now they're going us through a major workout. So that's an example of how we're fighting for our employees, and again, this is just an example, because there are lots of employees that are burning midnight oil, what is necessary to convey a message. What we did when that was, received contact from the fire chief about this need for an impact statement, we turned it around, and it arrived Monday morning, we opened our office, because we felt that we wanted the message to go out early, and to go out strong. And so there, there, every day, there's fighting behind the scenes for the, for the employees to avoid any further concessions or any decrease in the funding levels that we have from outside authorities. So we don't appreciate some of the terminology that, that is spanning above, inaccurate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for saying that. See you later, I'm going to be meeting.